Maybe they're happy with who's.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this November 7th, 2013 School Board Meeting. I'll call the meeting to order. Kelly Foster is running late tonight. She had a previous engagement. She knew she would be late, so as vice chair, I've got the microphone, I guess, again for a little bit. So with no further ado, Ashley, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I plead to the flag of the United States of America and should be the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Hayes, could I insist that we have students in the room every meeting?
A great touch, huh?
The younger voices just made that much more fun.
Right.
Yeah, thanks, everyone, for being here.
Yes.
That's awesome. I will continue by reading our mission statement. "The Newmarket School District is committed to the highest standards of quality education. We ensure a safe and successful learning community. We embrace diversity and respond to the social, emotional, intellectual, and physical needs of every child. We strive to work with a broader community to ensure that students develop lifelong skills, enabling them to be contributing and productive members of society." So with that, we move to our recognition portion of tonight's agenda.
It's terrific to see all of you here tonight. Thank you for coming. We start all of our meetings by recognizing people that have done outstanding things within the district, and certainly you're certainly deserving of recognition, those of you here tonight. The first two recognitions are people who, unless they saw the agenda real quick, don't realize that they're being recognized, and that's unusual. We usually tell people, but it's a surprise. As a district, we have struggled for far too many years with technology, and be it not old equipment, infrastructure, not the tech support, and we, last July, hired a new tech operations manager, and then the end of July, he hired an assistant to be a PC technician, and it has meant such a world of difference in this district. You need to know that technology is really fast becoming what it should be, a simple tool that we all use and can depend upon, and that's unusual here in the district. So even though they've only been here since July, they certainly are deserving of the recognition, so I want to introduce them. First is, let me see which one I did. Okay. Jason Carey, who is our tech operations manager. Why don't you come up here, please? Awesome job. Thank you. And we'll bring your assistant up before you can leave. You want to say? Okay. And this is Chris Cooney, who... But they have, really, I don't know how you've done it, but you've done it and always done it with a smile. The customer service is terrific, and a help desk has never been so clean. So, thank you. Thank you. Yes, I know. Awesome job. Thank you, folks. You're welcome. One of the organizations, it's not really a school organization, but it's a school-community relationship that has served both sides very well for a number of years. It's called Link Together. And recently, as part of my job, I approve all of the flyers that get distributed and sent home to you folks and so forth, and one came along from a group of students that said, "We've got this project that we'd like to get going, and we need your permission to send this flyer home." And it was the second year in a row that these students, as part of Link Together, were creating a coat drive that would benefit needy people here in Newmarket, and it's for the month of November. And so I thought, what a great opportunity, very deserving of recognition, and the timing's great because people are at home watching us on TV, and hopefully it'll generate coats and mittens and hats and things like that for your drive. So what I'm going to do is bring up the coordinator of Link Together, Ree Cooper. I'll honor her because she does just an awesome job in coordinating this year in and year out, and very committed and dedicated to the young people in the community, and then we'll let her help in recognizing the rest. So Ree, why don't you come up, please?
Thank you so very much.
You're welcome. Jim asked me to say a little bit about Link Together. Service learning started in 2006. Our first project was the Pocket Park down by River Works, and I'm proud to say that since we started service learning, 84 children from Newmarket have helped in various projects. We've raised over $9,000 to help community services, applied for several grants that we haven't gotten, but the kids have really been able to work on their writing skills. One of the most important ones that they just finished last year is they applied for a $5,000 grant, working with Dr. Hayes and with Mr. Steve, to try to help communication issues and get more people out to vote. It was the Clifford Be Big Grant, but they're not done with that yet. We're working on some projects right now, and when they get done, they're intending to write to Allen and see if Allen will support us. So you still may get that money. So even though they're young in age, they think big, and right now they're working in several projects, the Honory to honor our veterans. We're also working on the coat drive. If anybody out there has gently used mittens, hats, gloves, jackets, there's a box at the elementary school that you can drop things off in, and then we'll be giving them to a woman in Exeter who will be getting them to different people that need to have them. And Newmarket's Little Elfs will be out again this year, thanking all the other people that volunteer in the community because they know how difficult it is. I'd like to call up Katie Guyer.
These are our hard work is issued, and all the writing and fundraising to get things going.
Well, I want to thank you two as well. I mean, I talked about the adults, but you're the people who do some terrific work. I know I met with you when you were planning on the grant, and this coat drive is just awesome. I really appreciate what you do, and I know the community does as well. What you have there is a little gift from the district that is recognizing you and thanking you for your efforts, and what... Is that a hit? I wondered, you know? I had no place in that, but...
Oh, wow!
Okay. Good luck at home.
Yes, thank you.
All right, ladies, here's what we do. Ladies, here's what we do, okay? Okay, here's what we do. I want you to put your backs up against this in a semicircle and come together as a group, because I want to take a picture, and so does someone else, okay? And Ree, why don't you get in with the two? Thank you so much. That concludes our recognitions. What we do now is take about a five-minute break, so board members can congratulate those people we honor tonight. So, thank you again for coming.
Because you have a Whopper.
Oh, these are my favorites!
What is it? Oh, Whoppers?
Oh, yeah. You can't eat anything? Did you say you can't eat anything?
No. You don't like these? But you got them. I don't do Whoppers. The milk is sour. I'm a sour, fruity kind of girl.
Like lemon heads?
I have more. You just can't.
Oh, way.
Do you like the sour gummy worms?
I love them.
Ooh, I have some. I might just, you know.
Anything sour, not chocolate, honey girl. I don't like chocolate.
I like chocolate and salt is my new thing.
Potato chips?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Chocolate-covered potato chips?
I have to have potato chips.
What?
I don't like chocolate-covered. No, just potato chips, just salt and vinegar.
I love, oh, salt and vinegar is my favorite.
Oh, my God. I ate the whole bag this morning on the way into my car. I was so hungry. I haven't made a horrible dinner, so I kind of just was like, I'm not hungry. So this morning, I'm like, I ate a bag of salt and vinegar.
Something tells me a doctor wouldn't be thrilled with that.
Oh, yeah. There's a reason why, you know, I'm not a figure of, what we used to say when I was at school is, "I have a body of care."
All right. Moving right along.
Russell Spro.
My last chance.
We'll take the gavel out.
Okay, shall we continue? That was great fun, having that youthful energy.
Yeah. And thank Mrs., I think it was Mrs. Bottomen, was it, for choosing those gifts? We had, it was by committee, okay.
It seemed to be...
It was a hit.
Oh, yeah.
Great call.
All right. So this is the point in our agenda that we welcome visitors to make comments if they so chose.
Don't we have to fix the mic?
Yeah, I'll turn them.
Hi, I'm Joanne Lazarus, and I have a few comments tonight. First, at last school board meeting, a conversation was held concerning Dr. Hayes' evaluation and staff input. Historically, teachers and staff have always had input on a superintendent's evaluation. In fact, our last permanent superintendent, Dr. LaRoche, we did provide input on that. Dr. Hayes, you are the leader of our community, and you set the tone, so to say that highly educated adults do not know what their boss's job is, does not speak well for the tone of our district. Our input was sought when you were applying for the job and should be sought to see how you are performing. You volunteered to give the school board members names of people that you regularly have dealings with, and so I'd like to volunteer myself and my co-president, Janice Murray, as we do meet with you at least once a month for the last several years and on other occasions. So we have observed firsthand your style and methods, as well as have direct evidence on how your decisions have influenced our school. There was another concern raised that people would use, take the opportunity to have feedback to vent frustrations. While that is a possibility, we would follow in the Danielson's method for evaluations, that likelihood is greatly decreased. The other aspect of the comment is, never mind, skip that part, but give us staff members a chance to show you how professional we truly are, and that we understand the rigors of your job, Dr. Hayes, and the impact it has on us. Secondly, last year, just wanted to touch base about the enrichment program that was cut due to budget constraints last year. The school board was assured by administration that while the program would be missed, teachers would be able to provide enrichment in their classrooms. Last week, a new enrichment program was started at the elementary school for grades one through five. Our reading and math specialists are now providing pull-out instruction once per week to the students that scored the highest on one assessment. In order to provide this service, these instructors had to give up one day a week working with the students on the lowest end of the reading spectrum. Some of the best parts of our previous enrichment program was that every grade level was involved, teacher input was constantly sought, and the instruction was specifically geared to each group based on their needs. Shifting hats again, there was another recent news report about the next wave of the LGC refunds, in which it clearly stated that Newmarket will be receiving another refund for the year 2012, and that 2010 and 2011 have already been refunded. As far as I've been informed, only the 2010 funds have been released to the eligible employees, so the question is, is there a timeline for the 2011 monies? And I'd like to also request that a breakdown of the formulas used to determine percentages received be shared with the community. On a final positive note, recently, NTA sponsored a food drive for the Newmarket Food Pantry between the two schools. There were two pickup trucks and four carloads filled to the brim that were delivered to the food drive, Food Pantry on November 1st, and you can go to the Newmarket Food Pantry Facebook page to see photos of how we overfilled their pantry. So thank you to the community for pitching in, helping out with that. We will, we had modified our food drive from years past. We decided, we had talked with the Food Pantry, and this is a specific time of the year where they have great shortfalls, so we moved it up. During the holiday season, when we typically do it, we have decided we're going to give out grocery store gift certificates, so families can purchase exactly what they want for their celebrations. And then we will do another food drive in February, and we're going to, it's going to be around the idea of giving from the heart, so.
Can I just ask a few questions?
Yep.
And you meet once a month as a teacher?
As co-president of the union.
And you just discuss what's going on amongst the staff?
Yep. Well, we come to Dr. Hayes, and he, we have different agenda items, and we talk about things and try and prevent problems and solve issues, and it's very productive, and I think it's had a great...
We met this afternoon.
Yeah.
Okay, so you get to see how both sides work, and...
Yep.
Oh, yeah. Regularly.
That's something to take into consideration, then. And then my question is, the reading specialist not working with the, taking away from the lower end. Actually, they're giving back, obviously, to other needs, special needs, the kids who are scoring higher that do need more help. But are we taking away too much from other children, or how is that going to balance itself out?
That was never the intent that that would happen. Obviously, I can see that, I know that that has taken place, and that's, I've talked with the principal about getting that resolved.
Okay.
You know, I don't want to sacrifice...
Either side?
No, right, right.
Okay. Those are my questions.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to make comments this evening? Okay. Seeing no one stepping forward, we'll move to the approval of minutes. Is there a motion regarding the October 17th School Board Meeting?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 17th, 2013.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing no edits or comments, so all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries four to nothing. Then the meeting of October 24?
I move to accept the minutes from the October 24th meeting.
Second.
And this meeting, just for clarity, is a budget work session? I was not in, at that meeting, so I will abstain from that vote. Are there any notes regarding those minutes? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Obviously, none, so the motion carries. Voting three and one abstention. Then October 31st, another budget work session.
I move to accept the minutes from the October 31st budget work session.
Second.
Any discussion on those?
Yeah, I'd like to, on the second page, probably middle of the page, it's talking about Kelly Foster asking whether the Teachers Association had reviewed the online set of teacher evaluation tools for use by teachers, as well as administrators. And at the end, it says that Dr. Hayes indicated they had not, but that everything contained in the online system is consistent with the current evaluation system in the district, and indicated that the association will have an opportunity to review the software. I just wanted to make sure, was that something that happened or occurred?
Not yet.
Not yet?
No, not at all.
Okay. Just wanted to check. Thank you.
Other comments? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries four to nothing. Onto committee reports. Ashley, what's going on in that school? Winter's coming, and your senior year is slipping by.
Okay.
What's new?
The girls had their semifinals game last night up in Laconia, and they lost against Woodsville. It was a very good game. They went into double overtime and then into PKs, so very, very close. And they finished their season 14-5. The boys soccer team finished 10-7, and the boys football team are 4-4, and they play Saturday against Bishop Brady in the playoffs. And I think that's home. Yep. So with all sports, and then the senior banquet is on Tuesday, November 12th, at Sitz in the CAF. Town show's tomorrow night at 7:00 PM. And then also, a skateboard club has been added to our school this year, and it was recognized in the Exeter newsletter, which is kind of cool. Mr. Bariel, he's the advisor for that group. The senior class is still sending, selling Monarts tickets. If anyone's interested, you can talk to Mr. Andruski. Project Grad has bingo this Saturday at 12:00 in the CAF, and our school was involved in a "stick up to bullying" campaign type of deal, and Interact posted a positive comment on a sticky note on each student's locker. That was kind of nice. That's it.
Great. Any questions for Ashley? That's great, thank you. So I understand the girls' soccer game, they were playing the top-seeded team, wasn't it?
Yeah. I think we were third or fourth seed.
And took them to double overtime.
Yep. So they held them pretty close.
So, tough when it comes down to penalty kicks late in the evening, but...
And even then, it was close. It was like one for one, two for two, and they got ahead, and they caught up. It was really close. It was a good game.
We're all proud of, we're all proud of them, and they represented us well. Okay. Okay, moving on then. Dr. Hayes, you have the superintendent's report, things you want to highlight at this point?
Just a couple of things I was going to comment, but you already heard about the food drive, but just terrific success, and people really energized, so it's good, very good to see, very good to see.
I know a retired teacher has kind of been championing that for many years, Greg Thayer, and it warms my heart to know that that program is going to continue on.
The only other thing to talk about, I had put in your packet, it's really under correspondence, but let me talk about it here. A "Save the Date" postcard. What I've been working on is a set of informational things to, that I intend to provide as direct mailing. I intend to do other things, but I want to mail it to every household and residents in Newmarket plus post office boxes and so on, and do it in a periodic way, not so that, not so that I overwhelm them, but the second, the second thing that I'm working on, and it's almost finished, and I'll circulate it, you can look at it, is a simple pamphlet that says, "What's the problem with the school?" So I went through and I captured all, from all of the studies that we've had over the years, what, and try and put it in real simple terms, what's the problem? Why are we struggling so with this facility and having a need to fix it or replace it? So again, that's something that would be a mailing, and then I anticipate the next one would be, what are the options? People want to know, all right, give us all the options, give us the costs, tax impact, pros and cons. So once this one's done, I'll begin working on that, so that hopefully eventually, if they hold on to them, if they read them, they'll have as much of the facts as I can produce.
We could give them out basketball games, or have a table there or something.
Sure, we can make them available, right, right.
But your target isn't just parents, it's the whole community.
It's everybody, yes, in the community, everybody. And, you know, because, I mean, even this "Save the Date" thing, it isn't just saying, here's the date, but it's, you know, it's really important that, you know, I personally don't care what the decision is, as long as it's made by a lot of voters. You know, there's nothing worse than a bad decision and a low turnout, and so you want to definitely avoid that. So I'm going to try to do everything I can to keep it out in front of people, so that if they're not, if they're not there to register, then they do it by, I mean, to vote, then they do it absentee. We just need to get as many people in on whatever decision we're making in March. We need to do that, so.
I love the "Save the Date" postcard. I would comment, we might want to boldface or highlight in some way the dates, because we're talking about the dates, and the dates, I think, could pop out of there even more.
Okay.
But, and then I think for public consumption, because they're not looking at what we're looking at, I think it's important to say, in case anybody had any concern, this is not a persuasive, this is not a persuasive vehicle. This is simply reminding folks that these conversations are being had, we ought to participate, and you have a deliberative session opportunity on the 8th of February and a voting day on March 11th. That's all that this is, that we're looking at. But I think it's really nicely done, it's very professional, real succinct, and the, you know... That's all that this is, that we're looking, but I think it's really nicely done, it's very professional, real succinct and the, you know, the stuff pops right out to give everybody a reminder.
Thank you, Nick.
I hope they go on refrigerators.
I hope so too, that's the intention, or it goes back to college or whatever, but it, uh, the second thing too is that, is that the, uh, the district e-newsletter is a great resource for getting out my, the information in a timely fashion. And, and so I'm hoping it'll get more people to sign on to that and, uh, and let that be the vehicle for learning what's going on, you know, so.
Yeah, I loved having the test scores on there, on the.
Oh, thank you.
I love that, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's very important that we know what our teachers are doing in that building.
And remember, it was in the district improvement plan and to create a district report card. And so my, my concept shifted from one big report card to something in every newsletter that then is an element of that report card. And so then I'm going to eventually capture them all into one report card, but I think feeding it out every, uh, every time I send a newsletter is a good, uh, good way to say, here are the indicators of, of success or not, but this is, this is New Market.
That's great.
Thank you.
Before we move too far from the save the date, um, mailing card, I just want to mention the dates that we're saving. For those that might be watching at home thinking, but, you know, well, what are the dates they're talking about? It's February eighth, which is Saturday, which is the deliberative session. And then voting day is, uh, is Tuesday, March eleventh, which is the, um, downstairs here in the town hall, um, for the, for the ballot voting. And the, uh, just add also that is the voting day for both the town and the school district as that has been, um, aligned in recent years.
And I don't know if I've shown you too that, on this save the date postcard, the banner that's there, that's, we're, we're, we're trying to move towards a new website. That's, that's the new banner on, on the new website, so really, uh, really came out nice. Okay, and that's all that I have for superintendent's report.
Okay, should we move into facilities then?
Yep. Uh, facilities, uh, first relative to tuition agreement, let me go back in time a little bit so that I, I bring people to date. On Tuesday, October twenty-second, the representatives from New Market met with those representatives from Oyster River. And, uh, and one of the things that's relevant to tonight, we provided them with a set of proposals. Because they, in, in early October had opened the door to us to negotiate any final terms on that framework that their board had approved. And, um, uh, to be honest, we've had no direct feedback or meetings on that since the twenty-second. I know it's still being processed, uh, in Oyster River. I had an email exchange with the superintendent today. Apparently last evening their board did meet with their attorney to go over. I think it's, I think there may be a proposal there from Barrington as well as ours. And, um, he had said that as soon as he can, as soon as he calls this afternoon and confirms some things, he'll be getting back to me. But I still have no news. As far as I know, we're still on track for them to make a decision on November twentieth. However, I would say, we, we have no meeting set on the book, books to continue negotiating, which is a concern for me and that, I keep pressing that with him. So hopefully, uh, because I suggested today that we put, put a date next week and then the week after, we have two before the twentieth. And so we'll see, but that's, that's where that stands.
So for public, maybe, well, maybe you're headed there.
No, go ahead.
Our, we took a vote.
Yes.
Two weeks ago, three weeks, two weeks ago?
Um. Is the date on there?
The twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fifth, twenty-fifth of October?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fourth, whatever.
Twenty-fourth, you did, on the twenty-fourth.
So to, to bring that full circle, we took a vote that said, if we were presented with, or had to, in our, at our disposal, a mutually agreeable agreement.
Correct.
Which is why we're talking about further negotiations, that we would put that forward to the, to the public on the ballot. So we're kind of waiting because there's been no feedback since.
No.
About taking steps to make it mutually agreeable.
And in your, and in your packet tonight is the, uh, the memo that I wrote.
To that effect.
Your vote, I did that on the next day on the twenty-fifth. And, uh, since that time, I've sent a couple of emails, but again, you, you have the update as to where we are right now.
Okay. Can't, can't do much more than you've already done. Unless we all get in the car and drive up there right now.
Are you there? No, we can't. All right, let me move on. Uh, capital projects, uh, next, uh, next Thursday, we have a budget work session and I think we're on track to present you with a list of what we perceive as capital projects. They're not things that are contained in the FY fifteen budget. You may look at some and say, maybe we should, um, but, uh, or put it as a separate warrant article. But it's really to do what I think is some long-range planning about our facilities. We put so much attention into the junior, senior high school. We've got some things on there that are elementary school oriented, so we're really keeping watch on, on keeping our facilities in good shape. So you'll see that on the fourteenth. The third thing to mention, it wasn't in the report that I provided for you, but we've been doing some work lately on trying to redesign the junior, senior high school design, the new design, to be more compact, less costly. So, uh, in the last couple of weeks, I've had, um, some conversations and then one meeting with the, uh, with the architect. We have then exchanged designs, so we're getting close to a new design. And once that gets a, gets some approval, it'll be part of getting a cost estimate. So we're not far away, it could be by the end of next week, we'll be seeking a cost estimate. Today, Jason and, and I had a meeting with a tech consultant, because when you do a cost estimate, one area that a, a cost estimator generally doesn't deal with is technology. They have somebody with that special expertise, so we met today. Because where we were a year ago, or two years ago, we're, we're a long ways away from that. And so there's a lot of technology that we either have or will have, um, that we can walk across the street if there's a school over there. And so we think we can reduce the technology, um, estimate as well, so we're, we're trying to do that. So that's on that design. The other thing is that I, I haven't done it, but it's, it's on my to-do list the next few days. I think we need to, um, I need to give the go-ahead to the architects to start the process of designing fire and life safety improvements to the building. As we did a year ago, we need to be in a place that come March meeting and after March meeting, if we, um, if, depending on how things go, we're going to need to start to go out to bid perhaps to fix those fire and life safety things. So we've got to get solutions and that's going to take us several months to do it. I expect to be doing that in the next few days. And that's all I have for facilities.
Any other questions regarding facilities? Okay, thank you for those updates.
Thank you.
And, and welcome.
Hello.
We, uh, we just finished committee reports and they're going into program and I'm happy to hand you the gavel back.
Wonderful. I'm in my program. There it is. Hey, everyone. Okay, so where are we? Preschool standards-based report card pilot. Um, Julie Cooper and Ann Cochi.
Cossey.
Cossey, sorry.
Yes, I'm Julie Cooper and this is my nineteenth year teaching at the preschool program. And I think Ann and I work really very smoothly together. We just wanted to give a little bit of background about where we're coming from and we had presented a new progress report we'd like to use at the preschool level for our students. When I first started working in ninety-five, we had no curriculum. We basically taught the children by developmentally appropriate, um, practices and by the children's IEPs. We did not have any community, um, partners at that time in the program and we were, we were at the high school, a little tiny space I was in. Our program has more than doubled since then and we've added, um, community partners to our program, which we have a very large waiting list for, for next year. We have twenty-seven children on our waitlist with only three slots opening up for next year. So, we really could service a lot more families if we had that capability. But unfortunately with our space, we have one little room that we operate four classrooms out of, four classes out of, um, we don't have that capability. But at the, what we wanted to do was look at a more formal way of kind of aligning ourselves with what's happening at the elementary school. And also with what the state has put forth. In two thousand and five, they gave us, um, guidelines for children, um, outcomes for children with disabilities. And they are revamping that as we speak and there is a draft of that, I think, available for people to look at.
On the Department of Education website and they're, they're hoping to release it in the summer of two thousand and fourteen. So there will actually be early childhood learning standards, um, for children from birth through age five. But right now, we really are left without any formalized standards. And so what we've tried to do is to connect to the Common Core state standards. To be able to look at what children are supposed to be able to do in kindergarten, back it up to what we will hope children will be able to do when they leave from preschool with us. And kind of looking at some of the prerequisite skills that children would need to be able to have in order to do that. So over the past year, in coordination with our speech and language pathologist and our occupational therapist, um, we've looked at writing some scaffolding plans of what those skills are that children need as prerequisites for going into kindergarten. And what some of the prerequisite skills are that, that lead up to that. Certainly understanding that the population that we serve at the preschool level, there's really a wide variety of skills. Being that we have children, you know, who come to us at, um, three years old, but it's partway through a school year. So they actually have two more full school years with us before they go on to kindergarten. All the way up through children who are five years old, typically developing, beginning to read. And so we really wanted to be able to kind of look at all of those children and look at what it is that we want to do to kind of best serve them. So we had included for you our scaffolding plans and I did bring them, um, on my stick if you want to kind of take a quick look at those.
Can turn that on? Thank you.
And also, we've, we've also melded different things, you can go and bring that up. Because we do use Scott Forsman and we use the everyday math and the handwriting without tears, all the things that they use, um, at the elementary school, the kindergarten level. And we've also, um, used, we've used those as well as.
What we've learned from Mahesh as well.
Right, Mahesh Sharma.
Yeah.
And then we also have, which is on here as well, um, the APEPS, which is the, uh, preschool outcome measurement system, which we have to use, to report to the state on all of our children who have special needs, they have to have that, attracts progress in a lot of different areas. So we've tried to put all of this together and come up with what we felt was a, uh, meaningful progression of skills for the children. And then we've used that information to go on to the progress report that you were given as well.
Sure, thank you. So this is our English and Language Arts scaffolding plan. Um, and so we went through the Common Core state standards and looked at each area. And then looked at what, um, for each area, what it is that we would expect children to be able to do when they're leaving from preschool. So I'll just go through a couple of things for you now. So if you look under literature and informational text, um, under key ideas, at the kindergarten level, they want for children to be able to ask questions themselves, related to character setting, plot, identifying character setting and plot. And really at the preschool level, we just want to model for them and get them starting with practicing asking questions. Asking questions is more difficult than answering questions, um, in typical development for children. So, you know, we want them to have that practice. You know, looking at the level below where it says, answer questions about text related to character setting and plot. So if they're not able to ask the questions themselves, are they able to at least answer questions related to that? And then, you know, at a level below that, for children who are younger or who are not quite prepared for doing that, will they be able to answer questions such as, who is it? Where is the story happening? What happened? So as they're learning that vocabulary. And so we went through, um, each area of the English, um, and, uh, early, excuse me, the English Language Arts. And looked at each area and looked at what it is that we want for children to be able to do, um, as they're exiting from preschool. We did the same thing with mathematics as well. And then what we did is, um, over the beginning of this school year, we've gone and made a progress report, which is similar to the kindergarten, um, report card in format. And what we're looking to be able to do is to use this to be able to report to parents, um, what it is that we're working on with their children and what their child's skill level is. We don't expect that we'll be able to use this with every single child that we have in our program. Some children were not quite at that level yet. But for most of our children, we'll be able to report on at least some of these things. So if I can just get this to open up, here we go. So again, this is like the format of the kindergarten report card. If you look under literature, you know, some of the things that we hope children will be doing over the course of their preschool career before they go to kindergarten, is being able to attend to group literacy activities, handle books at age level, answer WH questions such as who, where, why. Answer questions with adult support, um, tell what's happening from pictures and books and so on. So again, we looked at all of the different areas. We looked at both English, um, and Language Arts, mathematics, as well as some of the other things that are just really important for being prepared for school, such as personal social skills, um, fine motor skills, gross motor skills. And so what we're hoping to do is with your approval, be able to use this to report to parents in a more formalized way than what we've been able to do up until this point. Right now, what we've been doing is at the end of each term, we're required to, to say for children who have, um, individualized education programs, what their progress has been on their IEP. But for all of our children, we want to be able to report to the parents how they're doing. So we've written progress narratives where we've just said, for each of these areas of development, here are some of the things that your child is doing. This is just a way that we feel that we could make it more formalized and would also be a connection from preschool to kindergarten.
Any questions?
I guess a couple of comments. One is, um, it's great to hear that at the preschool level, you're already talking about using the same language. Because it can be confusing if you're not using the same, um, terms for things, um, for mathematics or, or whatnot. You, you're giving these kids a, a good running start.
Right.
It seems that, so when they show up at, in kindergarten, they, they already know the, the common language that they're going to be sticking with through elementary school and beyond. So that's, that's great to hear. I like having a lot of different, um, you know, I, I see many of the items maybe on the, on the list of, on the report card as maybe conversation starters. Where.
Absolutely.
You know, it's not just check the box and move on, it's, it's an opportunity to reflect on each child and their development in a particular area. You don't want to, you, I see that as easily missed if you're just going to write a paragraph.
Absolutely.
Which might be what, what has been done historically.
And we've actually designed a, another form we don't have here, but one that we use for gathering that data, which gives a little bit more information than you would see here that we can talk with parents about. So if it says, you know, counting one to five, for example, and you put down, well, that's beginning. You know, a child knows now they count from one to two, you know, we know that. Or if we're looking at the reading, what level, we always do a, um, a story retell, uh, language sample, which I love doing. It gives me so much information where we take down exactly what the child says and then we, we actually adding that to the bottom because I like it so much. And it shows the types of language they use, the, you know, the parts of speech they use, if they're able to sequence with the story and whatnot. But, um, we thought this would be a really good tool to give us a lot of information in the different areas of their development.
Development, I appreciate, I appreciate the developmental scale being applied in this standards-based environment. I, um, you, you bristle a little bit when you think of three or four-year-olds getting graded.
We don't grade them.
And this really doesn't grade, so I, I really appreciate that. And I think that for some, some parents, it will be not only a conversation starter, but, uh, it'll answer what they didn't necessarily get in, what to, what to expect when you're expecting or what have you.
Absolutely.
It really says, you know, I've done tummy time, uh, what else should I be looking at? And I, I think these are reasonable developmental standards, I think it's outstanding and I, I appreciated the narrative that I got once upon a time. But I think this is just another tool that would have been, uh, would have been really, really neat to look at, so.
It's fun.
Thank you for bringing it, that's awesome.
Great, thank you.
So we, we have a policy, I mean, we can certainly motion endorsement of it, but.
I don't believe we have a policy, I'm obviously have a policy that we, you know, report on a, in a standard way. But I think, uh, it's, it's perhaps a good thing if the board would, you know, take a vote to, you know, to endorse the use of this. It just adds a little more credence.
I would move our endorsement of, of the standards-based, uh, standards-based report card for preschool that was presented this evening.
I'll second. That's great.
Fighting for it. Any further discussion?
I just wanted to ask, I know at like the elementary school level, and I can't remember back to kindergarten, but when they would give you the first progress report or the narrative, would you have like parent meetings?
We always have.
We do, yes.
We do have that, so that would.
Starting those nails, matter of fact.
Have the conversation starters.
We do have a conversation, yes.
Discussion, okay, so that makes. To have discussion. Okay, so that makes complete sense. All right, perfect.
Yeah, this would be very overwhelming, I think, for a parent to receive their very first time.
I bet.
Without having the conversation starter. And so, this is a great opportunity for us to be able to say, "Here is what we're looking at. Here is where your child is now." And so, by next term, if they're still in, you know, if they were beginning now and at the next time they're developing, that's going to show you some progress for your child.
And to explain to parents also that because we have children that are in their two-year-old school year, three-year-old, four-year-old, we don't expect a child in their two-year-old school year is going to be, you know, secure in a lot of these areas. Right.
All right.
Yeah.
Can I ask, just a reminder, there's, so, a few kids from the community, you said that the waiting list was what, 20-some-odd?
Twenty-six.
We have 27 for next year.
And how many students do you have? You have three openings, but how many total?
We have a total of 12 typically developing children that are enrolled as peer models and not groups.
But a lot of them are three-year-olds this year, so they'll be returning next year.
Exactly.
If they have a slot this year, then they grandfathered in for next year unless they make another decision.
It seems to me it just, I'll take the opportunity to say, it's an important piece to have enough peer models so that there's, you know, there's enough observing going on for the kids that might need those models more.
Our program has grown so much, unfortunately, that we haven't been able to increase that. We did have four in each class, so we had 16, but then our population grew so much that we had to cut back on one.
Yes, now we only have three per class.
But maybe we can go back the other direction, who knows?
And that's largely driven by space at this point in time.
We have one, well, one room.
The fact that we have 27 children on the list for next year, 20 children on the list for the following year, four years out, we already have children on the list where parents have said, "I have a newborn. I have heard a lot of good things about your program. I'd like to put my child on the list so that they're high on your list." So, we already have, I think, seven children on the list.
People are getting on your list before they're buying what to expect when you're...
Right. Expect a slot in preschool.
You may expect some calls tomorrow.
We might.
I think I had to show the birth certificate before they put me on the list. I remember that conversation.
So, a pregnancy test probably is a good one. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks. Great job.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed.
Very good.
Okay. The next thing on our program is the update on the Data Manager position, Amy Rossi.
And I think Pat Ballantyne's going to introduce it first.
Is this...
I have to play with the microphone.
New versus...
I don't have a, well, I don't have a loud voice, I guess. This evening, this is the first of the presentations where we bring to you one of the new positions that came out of last year's budget discussions and programming. This particular position is being filled, it's the Data Manager piece. It is a district-wide position, and the person who is currently doing an incredibly good job with it is Amy Rossi. She's come here this evening to explain to you her goals and how the program is currently taking off and what she plans to do with it district-wide. So, at this point, I'm going to let Amy take over. She's got a couple of slides to show you, and I'm so excited that she's here to talk to you this evening.
Pat?
Yeah, let me just, before you turn them off, let me make sure I can get this on. There it is. I am going to just hand, Christine, may I ask you to take one and pass it, please?
Absolutely.
There's two papers. I asked if I wanted her to introduce me, and I thought, well, everybody here knows me. But I'm sure glad she did, because I appreciate the compliment. Thank you. Okay. Lights? Cameras? What I have, what's coming down the road to you is really just a copy of what's on the screen here. I just thought it might be easier if you had a copy yourselves, as well as having it up on the screen for everybody to see. When Pat gave me a call and asked that I come and just give you an idea of what I've been doing, I thought, wow, I guess I have to figure that out. And for me, as with many of the kids in our school, a graphic representation was a helpful way of me to be able to explain it to you. So, I'm going to use the backwards planning model, and I'm going to actually start, the goals are over on the right, and I'm going to start over on the left to kind of show you how I get there. We have a student information system, I always walk away from the mic, sorry. We have a student information system called Infinite Campus, and most people don't know much about it, including me, when I got this job. I knew that we had such a system and had no idea how intricate it is and how it enables us to keep track of every one of our students and all of the components that go with it. So, one of my jobs is not to necessarily run that, but to make sure that our kids are being captured. And because we had our 33-year veteran leave us last year, Edie Bodett, it meant that I needed to learn a lot more about it very quickly so that I could help Candace Buell, our new administrative assistant, operate with it. And what that system does for us is it allows us to take information about our students and upload it to the State Department of Education. And it's through that system that a lot of other things run. And one big part of that is the assessments that our students take in all of our schools, and that's a big part of my job. The information from the state goes right to the kneecap testing, which will soon end. But then, we also have to take information from our information system to populate the other assessments that we have for our kids, one of them being the Northwest Assessment, showing up there as NWEA, and our Ames Web and DIBELS testing. So, we need to make sure that the information that goes into those is, you know, very clean and that we've got everything all set so that we have great assessments for our kids. Then, that, all of that information, as you can see, kind of winds back down again and goes together into the state system with Performance Plus, which is a fabulous tool that we have from the state that enables us to manipulate the data that comes from all three assessments. So, that virtually now, it's gotten a lot easier than it used to be. We can actually go online, the teachers have logins, and we can say, you know, "I'm really curious about how this student is doing, and I wonder if I can compare their reading scores from all of the assessments together so I can get a much clearer picture of what's happening with this child and how I can change my instruction in order to help them better." And that's what we're able to do, and that's what I see as a huge part of my job. Each of the assessments has components that give you different pieces of information, excuse me. And with all of those pieces together, it really helps us define, you know, what are the needs of the child, where are they excelling, where do they maybe have some weaknesses, and how can we develop a better instructional model to help that child. So, I'm doing this and trying to do this in all of the schools. It's not just an elementary school thing. I'm most familiar with the elementary school. And what we're doing there is, there's been a model of data teams that has existed in the elementary school for a number of years. And we've been modifying it this year, so that instead of meeting every six to eight weeks and having a very long meeting and really talking about the kids that we feel may need some additional supports, we're meeting every two weeks. And you'll see the second piece of paper you have. Let me just click for a minute to that one. It's an example of a document that we're using during those meetings, and you can see I've taken all the names out of it. But just wanted to give you an idea of the type of detail that we look at for each child so that we know that we're supporting them the most effective way. So, you can see it's a classroom teacher, then the student, the interventionist, because we have a number of interventionists. They each have their own specialty for working with the kids. What type of intervention? And then, you see something that says, "PM Info." That's the progress monitoring. Any child who receives interventions in our school receives some type of progress monitoring, where we're getting a more frequent snapshot of how they're doing with the intervention that they're being provided with, so that if they're not progressing, we can make a change. Response to instruction. And so, the fact that we're doing that now every two weeks is that we're really checking in on the kids a little more frequently. If a child pops up as appearing to have needs that has not already been on the list or that we haven't already addressed, then we're doing it in a more frequent time schedule so that they're not falling further behind. One thing that you, I'm sure you've heard about is that if a child is falling behind where they should be at any grade level, the longer they fall behind, the wider the gap becomes from where they are and where their peers are going. So, we need to, the frequency is going to help us close that gap. And just making sure that we're using interventions that are really working for the kids. I'm going to flip back for a minute. So, during those meetings, in addition to looking at that data, we're also looking at, what are the assessments that we have? How can I, in my position, help all of the teachers access the information more easily? Because that's one thing. I mean, classroom teachers don't have a spare second. They just don't with everything that they're doing. And so, one of the things that I really consider a real priority is to make sure that they have easier access. I've provided a lot of, you know, small training sessions already and am always saying, "If you need help with something, just let me know, and I'll be on the spot to help them access the information more easily." The more they can access it in a, you know, quick moment, then they can check in on a child more quickly. So, that's one of the things that I've been trying really hard to do, is make sure that everybody has ease of access to the information that is available. We're also looking at the assessments that we're using. We want to make sure that we have formative assessments that are common throughout a grade level, so that everyone's testing the same thing. We're testing based on the Common Core standards and making sure that our kids are getting what they need in order to attain those standards, to reach those standards. We're also working on drilling down, as I said, there's a multitude of information available from those assessments, but you have to keep drilling down in order to do that. So, that's another part of my job, is to help teachers do that, to find those, you know, little fine points that are going to help any child learn and reach, you know, close that gap and reach those standards. In the junior high school, things are set up a little bit differently, and we've been working really hard on finding, at each grade level, what it is that I can do to help them. We've been talking about assessments and student data, and a lot of things we've talked about are transitions from one grade to another. How can we smooth those out? By having the right information available so that those transitions are really smooth. We've talked about how to fine-tune some of the assessments that we're already using, maybe changing timing, maybe talking to the kids ahead of time. And, you know, they're at an age where they can take more responsibility for understanding why they're taking assessments and what things that they need to be prepared to do. So, those are some of the things we've talked about there. In the high school, the, things are run mostly by department. So, those department meetings aren't quite as frequent, and I have worked, for instance, I went to the Science Department meeting recently, and we looked at the science kneecaps, and I showed them how we can use the Performance Plus program through the state to look at how our kids are performing by standard in science. And then, we can look at the different grade levels from seventh grade, I mean, sorry, seventh grade, from sixth grade up through 12, and look at how the vertical planning is. So, those are the types of things that we can do in that format. So, working within the different formats of the different areas of the district, I'm trying to just, you know, with collaboration with our fabulous teachers, find what are the best ways that I can help and that we can use the data that's available to us to help our kids. If I'm not working with them directly, I'm going to do everything I can to help them in other ways. So, and then, one other component, I just happened to look up and see that I didn't mention, is that I'm also helping with access and the recording of curriculum. We're currently using what's called Curriculum Connector, which is part of the Performance Plus package through the State Department. And again, it's learning the access and helping them access things is good, just making it easier so that they're not spending precious moments struggling with technology rather than working with the kids. So, I'll struggle with it. And so, that's how I get to those goals.
Sounds like an awful lot.
It's a challenge, but I like a challenge.
Now, when you say somebody does the intervention, who would be doing those interventions?
Well, we have a number of different people doing interventions, special ed case managers, our Title I instructor. We have math instructors and some other reading instructors. So, it's all of the speech department, occupational therapy, which don't fit in as much with the grading. But one of the things that's fabulous about data team meetings is that all of the service providers come. And when we're looking at the assessments and looking at scores, there's other components, and that's why the collaboration is so vital. You know, a classroom teacher can say, "I know that this child's scores may tell you this, but don't forget the other aspects of the child," you know. And so, the classroom teacher is going to provide, you know, kind of a daily report of, you know, this is something else involved other than assessment scores that affect a child. A speech pathologist, you know, if a child's having a problem with articulation, though we may think they're having a difficult time reading letters, they're actually saying the right one, we're just having trouble with that. An occupational therapist, someone's having trouble with writing, it may be more of a fine motor issue. So, bringing all of that together and having that collaboration really helps us to fine-tune it.
I know in the history of this position...
I'm sorry.
I'm saying, the history of this position, we've been trying to add it to our list of positions, and we finally were able to put you in it. So, I'm curious, I want to say that I'm certain that some teachers are probably, were just waiting to have the opportunity to come to you and be like, "I've always wanted to be able to, like, do this. Can you help me with this?" Or can you, I mean, are you finding that there's this good give and take between, like, teachers are really trying to utilize you and, well, that's...
Yeah, absolutely. I get little emails every once in a while, "Amy, I can't get into this." Say, "What time can I come see you?" So, that's really positive. I, even prior to having this position, I had some experience with, for instance, the Performance Plus. I'd put on some workshops. So, one of the things that's really fortunate is that the staff already knows that I have some of that experience, so they feel comfortable asking for help, which is great.
I don't have that history to know the dialogue, the conversation you've been having about trying to get there. But I have to say, we've been, school districts have been throwing data on the wall for a decade or better.
What do they say, "Data rich and instructional poor"? What do they say, data rich and instructional poor?
Yeah, I mean, at...
The Dunkle?
Data-driven decision-making until you're blue, except, except it's really three professional development days a year, plus whatever you can figure out on your own at night or after school, because you really don't have the time during the day.
You don't.
And like anything else, other than a bicycle, I guess, if you're not using it consistently, it's hard to be as facile with it as you want, right? So you're always going back and trying to relearn. So that we have somebody who can invest themselves in being the go-to and driving that conversation and then being a constant reminder of, it's like this. And, I mean, I only hope things don't change, because they do, they change so quickly. You know, with four, five, or six, or seven of these things will change over the next three years. But assuming that they didn't, I can imagine you getting to a point where you could, you really would be able to keep such a concerted focus on this with all of the staff that you really might make yourself even more available to the new folks that come in, who are really needing to start over or start anew and work to catch up with their peers in terms of using all these tools, because we'll have built more capacity. Without somebody dedicated to it, it's harder to imagine that ever really coming to fruition. And so I commend the board and the district for having done it. I think this is outstanding. It'll be fun to see the kind of impact that this is gonna have, so you're gonna have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Maybe just a comment in that Nate hit many, many points and I just wanted to underscore the investment that we make in software and tools and not least of those is the time that we've taken away from instruction to test kids. So we really need to get every last bit out of that time away from the normal classroom setting. So I think that's where we're off to a great start. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
If I could make just one little last comment, and Nate hit upon it. We went to a curriculum director's meeting two weeks ago and they're all sitting around talking and I said, well, we have a data manager person K to 12 and there was like dead silence in the room. They went, no, sir! And I said, yes! Oh my gosh, you're so lucky, and I am. I mean, it just works out beautifully. It's current, it keeps everybody informed. Her energy level is the Energizer Bunny. You know, it's great. It's such, thank you, it's such a wonderful addition, it really is. Makes a big difference.
When you think about District Improvement Plan, it's been on it for three years and I can almost remember the words, like...
A consistent district-wide approach to using data to improve instruction. And as much as we had great intentions, it was always hit or miss and teachers had a hard time really taking it to another level. But now that we have one person that really is a go-to person and can bring that consistency and grow their skill sets, it's just terrific to see.
I don't wanna be the, you know, I don't wanna be the pom-pom person all the time, but I gotta say, it really is one of those things that has to be said out loud that reminds what great work we're doing in Newmarket, because, not to put too fine a point on it, but there are people in that community, when you go out, I don't mean Newmarket, I mean, in the state, when you say that, they, their first reaction is, you have that? And then their second is, Newmarket has that? It's really nice to say, mm.
Yes, they do.
You'll follow suit soon.
Get on the bus.
So I, you know, we're really doing, it's great, it's a great thing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that update. All right, now we're moving on to Technology Infrastructure Proposal.
Yes, Jason can come up and I know he'll speak to it, but let me, let me point out to you that in the pack, in the portfolio I emailed to you, there was one proposal. Since that time, it's been upgraded. So what was on your desk in front of you tonight is the one you should be looking at. It's got a bigger price tag.
The one with the chart and...
One with the chart, the spreadsheet that summarizes what we're looking for.
And the pretty pictures.
Well, the pictures were in already.
One loves pictures.
It's not pretty pictures.
Not to him, then, that's for sure.
Jim, we can just like abandon the other one?
Yeah, abandon the other one. It's only a portion of what you got on your desk tonight, so.
Looks like a Marge Simpson wig.
It's too early to be that giddy right now. We usually get that way around 10:00.
It's been a very long week, so we're okay.
Okay.
All right, so have you all had a chance to look through this proposal?
They haven't seen it all, because I remember we finished it off this afternoon.
All right, so the beginning is probably new.
The summary is a place where you might start off.
All right. It's exactly what it says it is and it's looking to acquire some funds to replace just about everything over at the school. A lot of it is desktops and classrooms at the junior, senior high school. As you learn in the past two weeks, when we've gone through our budget proposal, things are pretty old there and a major pain point for Chris and I, IT department, as well as the staff members and students choosing them, so. Go down the list here. Some of it's infrastructure, again, some of it's classroom desktops and then a few services as well, so. Get to the summaries. First one is desktops for the reading classroom at the junior, senior high school. Two desktops would be replaced there. Two other classrooms, 12 machines for the industrial arts classroom and that's assuming that 650 price again, $650 per unit, which is possible that would come down. And then above that is 12 more desktops that would go, would split them up, deliver them to the classrooms that need them the most.
Jason, if I can, you did say they're quite old. But they're ancient in computer standards, right? I mean, you're talking eight to 10 years old.
Yeah, they're to the point where, as you know, XP going end of life is a big problem for a lot of people. And these machines are at the point where they don't have the minimum hardware, processors, RAM to even run Windows 7, so. May be able to get it on there, but it would be just about unusable, so.
And when, can I stop you before you go? When you say desktops, are you replacing just the CPU or are you replacing entire...
Exactly, so we have keyboard, mouse and monitor already in place.
Already have those.
As I mentioned before, most of the CRTs, just about all of them are out of there, so. We'd just be replacing that tower. And again, newer equipment, we're gonna have a little bit of energy savings there too, so. So those are the three things that weren't on that original proposal and those are all for classrooms and will be used by students, so.
Let me ask a baseline question. These, the thing, the items that were requested here are not already in our 1415 request?
This is just where I was gonna go.
Good.
The first three lines, the reading, the two for the reading, the dozen for spread around classrooms and the dozen for industrial arts, those are in your FY15 budget, so we'd be pulling those out. There remains, the ones that get, the two for reading and then the 12 for spread around classrooms, my recollection was we were actually requesting 30, so that means there's still 16 that would be sitting in the budget. Okay? But other than that, the lap, the staff laptops were never there nor the infrastructure.
And if approved, we're talking about doing this with haste. We'd like to see this benefit, I mean, some of the, it can't be done overnight, some of the infrastructure work, but we'd like to see this benefit students during this school year and the funding sources that we're contemplating would potentially allow us to afford to do this.
Yeah.
You know.
Sooner than later.
If we could've brought this to you a month ago, we would have. We just didn't know the E-rate piece and it was really important that we get that.
Okay. So, okay, keep going.
All right. Next up is staff laptops and these, these are set up in order of importance, as I see them anyways. Student desktops, getting working computers in the classroom. Next would be the staff laptops. Again, these are in the same state where they're so old. We'll get help desk requests that say, hey, my computer's not working. We go down there and it's just, it's old. There's not much you can do besides say, hey, we'll bring this here and let the board know and see what we can do if we can get them replaced, so.
I love you wrote that, they're a nuisance.
Did I write that?
Users that rely on them.
Do we actually have teachers right now that don't have access to internet, to computer?
So, I mean, they can get internet access, some can't get wireless. We either tethered in. Some use their own machines from home, which is a security risk for us. They don't have our antivirus on there, not joined to our domain, so they don't get some of the features that they would have if they were on a district-owned, managed piece of equipment.
If they had to use what they had, they could be sitting there forever waiting for it to like boot.
Exactly, yeah. Some, some use the desktops in their classrooms, which are a little better than their laptop, and some will just come in and drop it off and give up, so.
Keep this, I don't wanna see it.
How many staff laptops are we talking about here, do we think?
We're looking to get 30. And another thing I'll point out is the physical condition of the laptops, the staff members have taken good care of them. I mean, I saw one, Carol Smart, hers looks very new, but just the technology inside is so old, so they appreciate them, they take care of them. So whatever we do get will last. We'll be looking at a Lenovo or something.
Keep smiling even when I ask you the questions you don't wanna hear, but let me just, let me ask them anyway. A lot of times, the reason they're in such good condition is because we buy laptops, but we don't take them home. And so let me ask the question, have we, are we, have we really considered, not because of the peer pressure involved in, everybody's got to have a laptop, but in the pure functionality of it, if we're buying laptops, which now we're estimating to be more expensive than a desktop, are we doing so because they really are being consumed as laptops and they're either moving around the building or they're going home at night so that people can get work done with them? Or are they laptops for the sake of laptops? Because we could buy more units if we went with more desktops. And then I have a follow-up.
We could offer them, we could offer an option for desktops, but I think a lot of it has to do with the size of these laptops. 10 years ago, they were, you know, big, eight, nine pounds, 16, well, 15, six screens. The ones I'm looking at now, that was the thing, we wanted something that was gonna be mobile, 14-inch, I don't know what the weight is, but maybe half the, half the weight, so. I think that was a deterrent from actually bringing their machines home, but it is an idea. I know some wanted, needed a numeric keypad. Bigger, bigger machines, but I think you're right, if we go laptops, something smaller, something mobile.
Okay. The other side of that, if I can take the other side, is if you go back and talk about your desktops for classroom, if we don't buy desktops to put in classrooms and we bought laptops instead, it's easier to collect them and make instant labs out of them when it comes time for smarter balance. And so as we contemplate buying a dozen to spread around and a dozen for industrial arts, which I assume is for CAD and pre-engineering and some other stuff, if it's incrementally more expensive, if we're talking eight or $900 instead of 650, you can still plug the monitor and the mouse in with a keyboard. The few extra dollars could really propel us forward when it comes time to do the assessment on smarter balance. And we, I know our timeline is a lot broader, so we can take it, but that may not be what serves us when we get there. So I, it's a rhetorical question, I just throw it out there, you know, do we need desktops or do we need laptops? And let's dare to deal and think about which ones we need, because you might wanna put laptops in all those places and then have that flexibility later.
Well, I asked about that, didn't I?
You might have, yeah.
I did and I said, do we, you know, is this a good plan? Do we have enough space with computers to facilitate smarter balance? I thought someone had said yes.
So these are replacements too? So they're replacing existing desktops.
We're in good shape for smarter balance, we're not worried.
Which seems to have work in that setup, so. Something to consider though. And I guess that's, that would be, maybe pull the classroom teachers.
Could I talk about laptops as a classroom teacher?
Sure.
I have two, I have two computers in my classroom for students to access and sometimes it's quite irritating because they have an attitude problem. But my laptop, even though it's old, because no one renewed it before they left the district and came to this district, it's great because if there's students sharing those two set stations, I can either pull a student over to my desk, which isn't very comfortable, or I can unplug my laptop and bring it to them and have them work on it. So it creates a really nice learning environment.
It does.
It's a mobile teaching experience for them. And then sometimes you can even hand them your laptop, make sure they sanitize their hands, and then you can go and, you know, work with another student.
Another feature that's nice too is when we have professional development activities and they might not be in a computer lab, everybody just brings their laptop and whether the meeting in a classroom or a library...
Well, data meeting...
Facilitates those things.
The data meeting with your laptop is just, it's so nice to have it.
Oh, I, one of the conversations, one of the things that drives the question is that, is that in the district where I work, we just got done replacing in two buildings laptops for teachers. And I see very few of them go home. But more importantly, there's now a request that we put iPads in the hands of all the teachers, because it's going to be so helpful for observation and evaluation and taking notes and grades and standards as they walk through the classroom. And I want very much to see that happen. I think it's a great idea, except I could've bought an iPad and a desktop for the money that I just spent in laptops if we had just contemplated the fact that what you do at home, browsing and email and keeping up with stuff at school, can in large part be done on the iPad now. And it's a lot lighter to carry home than those laptops that they're not. So I just, I beg the question because I'm watching the expensive dollars in another district and thinking, wow, we might've thought that through differently if we'd thought about this differently six months ago or a year ago. So as we get ready to do this, this doesn't necessarily have to be the time when you really confront that, but it's changing so rapidly. I just feel like I should ask the question because it gives food for thought, so.
Definitely.
If I may, the decision that really needs, that should drive what machine you're getting is the applications that are being used. So I guess my question is, do we have an inventory or a sense of what applications are need, are need to be used on those desktops? You know, if it's all web-based, we don't need a fast machine. We just need something that can run Google Chrome or what have you.
For the most part, you know, student information system, everything is going web-based, if it's not already, so. I mean, Office is probably one of the few local applications you're gonna be running.
And is that something that is used on those classroom desktops?
Yeah.
Not on the desktops, but staff laptops. It is available on the desktops, but I don't know how often it is used by students.
So could we use some sort of thin client if those are still part of the world?
We could. As far as setting up thin clients, the backend can be quite expensive. And in my last district, we spent $100,000 on about 110 thin clients. 40 was for the thin clients, 60 was on the backend servers, NAS, so. That would be, I mean, this district would be, it would be a great place to introduce virtual desktops and thin clients, but you're talking, to get the amount of workstations in here, it could be 150, 200,000 dollars.
In a big, kind of a lump sum part of...
Exactly.
Where we can, with this approach, nibble at the apple, I guess.
Exactly.
No pun intended. But some of my best puns aren't intended.
Okay. And then I'm just gonna say, with laptops too, we have teachers that move around in their rooms that don't always have one room.
Right.
So they need to have things that can move.
I mean, we could, we could offer that option, whether or not they wanted a laptop or a desktop, but next year they're probably gonna want, you know, the ones that got the desktop, the laptop. So another thing is management. If we get 30 of the same machines, one goes down, we throw a new image on it, it's easy to manage. You start throwing in all these different makes and models, management's gonna become more difficult.
And that's what we have now, is all these different makes and models and years and...
All sorts of stuff.
Yeah.
Which is hard to, you know, you have to reload a machine. It's like, well, we better grab an image because we don't know if there's more. Another thing we should point out right now is we just purchased asset management software as well as ID tags specifically for the IT department. Chris has begun inventorying everything, every piece of technology. So we know what we have, we know it needs to be replaced when it was purchased, warranty information, so that when we come here, it would've been nice to have it done already, but we're in the process of getting that going. So we know what we have and, again, the more information, the better.
Jason, would you take a second about the wireless? Because obviously that's a big chunk of this request and what we have now, what we're moving to and trying to put that in layman's terms?
Sure. Where's the wireless?
Very end.
Alright, so what we currently have is, I guess you could call it three different wireless networks. We have the Maru managed solution that's at the high school, which, I don't know the exact details about it, but I see Pike School asset tags on there, so it seems like it was a hand-me-down or, anyways. That's what exists at the high school.
We were doing work on eBay at some point.
Something, I don't know, I don't know where that came from, but-
Yeah, I think it was a donation.
Alright, so it's there. It does work, but I've had experience with being in a classroom, trying to access a server while students are getting on, to help change passwords, et cetera, and unable to connect just because, you know, twenty-plus kids on there, it can't handle it, that many connections. So where we, we talk about BYOD and possibly one-to-one, this, the solution that I propose here would allow that wireless density to, you know, run all our mobile labs at once with no slowness, I guess. So that's at the high school, that, the Maru Managed Wireless Solution. At the elementary school, it's just net gear, probably what you have at home, times sixteen, seventeen. The sad part is, there was no inventory, there were no maps done. So, I mean, Chris and I came into this, everything blind, and, you know, there's no history of what we have, nothing's been recorded. So with that solution being unmanaged, there's, I mean, it's almost impossible to manage, besides crawling on the ceiling and trying to find those access points. And then the SAU office is just one access point here, it's really no big deal. The solution I proposed here is manufactured by Arrow Hive. We currently, currently have four access points at the high school, testing them out now. Actually have them all set up, worked with their engineers, they, they sent out a few evaluation units. If you see here, there's a few other schools, Oyster, Rye, Barrington, Exeter, that are using this. Actually, the consultant we met with today, we told him what we were looking at, and he said a lot of schools are doing it. The beauty of Arrow Hive, it's a lot cheaper than Maraki, Maru, Aruba, some of the bigger managed wireless solutions that have a, based around a controller. Arrow Hive does not, it's managed, not controlled. That's getting into the technical side of it, but it would allow us to, from one workstation, manage every access point in the district, which would probably be around thirty to thirty-three of them. If there was an update on the software on each of those access points, again, one location, one management console, you can push that update out. Guest wireless networks would be able to offer that. So that's what that would buy us, that's estimated cost there was thirty thousand, twenty-two would be for the actual hardware. There is an option in there for a outdoor access point, for, I know they have an outdoor classroom at the NES. So that's something to consider, and we would need an additional POE switch to get these devices hooked up, and five thousand dollars for network cabling. We have existing runs, but we don't know where they are. So this, that, that price could come down, but I don't see it going more than that. Questions about the wireless?
Tell me which building, both?
The entire district. We're good. We're covered by this.
Tell me about the twenty-two thousand for Arrow Hive, that's a, is that a three-year number?
So the support, actually no, I could, I could give you a breakdown of the support costs, I'd have to take a look at the numbers, but the majority of that is hardware for the actual access points.
But is that twenty-two all-in for three years, or?
Exactly.
I don't have to spend twenty-two the second year, twenty-two the third year?
Nope, yeah, twenty-two thousand-
In fact, there'd be no support in year two and three, because it would be part of that?
Well, would it have, we'd purchase all the hardware, it would come with three-year support. Once those three years was up, would have to just renew the support on the access points.
Can they, can they give you any lifetime, I mean, are they going to want you to buy new hardware in three years?
Nope. The only, the only reason we'd want to replace our hardware would be to go with AC, which is gigabit wireless, which is fairly new, I mean, it just came out months ago, really.
That's fine.
So I could see this, I mean, I'd say this would be a five or six-year solution. It's something if we went to a new, new building, we could unplug and plug in over there, so. But the big points, again, centrally managed, everything, all from one console, and the ability to support a BYOD, have students bring their own devices, guest network, and some dense wireless coverage. Any questions?
Well, I, I mean, I just have a question, well, it's not so much a question, but I think we need an explanation for people that don't know. What is this E-Rate, and why do we benefit from it?
I'll answer that question, I wasn't sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure, E-Rate is a, a program which provides discounts on telecommunications, on video, voice, for its classrooms, so for schools and for libraries. It comes from USAC, it's a federal program, and it's based on our poverty levels. So we use our free reduced numbers to figure out what percentage range, there's a range and it goes from twenty percent to, I believe, ninety percent. And right now, we fall at fifty percent, so anything that we pay for telecommunications, EarthLink, voice, or cellphones, regular phones, internet would be covered at about fifty percent. So that's the reimbursement that we, that you show here for fifty thousand dollars, that is from the FY eleven and the FY twelve year. So that's what we were waiting for, to present this proposal to you, because we still hadn't received those figures yet, but they have been filed. The forms are filed, and we are in fact getting that money, so, and we should have in thirty days.
So they cut us a check?
They do. Well, you can take-
And we can spend on anything that meets those criteria?
Correct, correct.
And if we don't spend it on that, we have to go back, or?
Nope, we can do pretty much whatever we want with it, because we've already paid the money, we front the money every year, we get it in the rears. So this is from the eleven, the eleven year and the twelve year, and so we can spend it on pretty much anything that you want. The hope is that it's offsetting our expenses during that school year. So we're going to apply these funds to this program, but there's two ways you can take it. You can take it off of your bill, right now if we chose to, or we can receive a check, and I, and I chose to do the check. Because then I can follow the funds to make sure that, rather than watching every invoice that comes into me from these providers, I get one check and I can follow that, the money a lot easier, so it's a little bit more clear and transparent for the district to manage. Did that answer your question?
I thought I had it, and then I got confused. So we, we apply for this money?
Every year, yep.
Every year, and so it's, it's essentially a grant like other grant funding sources?
Okay.
No.
We, we have to file, it's similar, we have to file a Form 471 that states what we, what are, like, right now, I'm going to be filing a 471 form, that pretty much will tell E-Rate what I plan to do next year. So we're talking about doing a whole new phone system, because EarthLink, we're going to be out of our contract come March. So I have to file an application that says I'm going to have this for internet, I'm going to have a phone system that looks like this, this is what I anticipate to spend. If there's a bidding procedure that has to be done, that has to be done now, and it has to be posted for twenty-eight days. So like Jason and I are working right now on the phone system, because we have to actually put out that bid for twenty-eight days, and all, all vendors have access to this USAC program, they know that that's where they go, because all the bids have to go up there if a school wants to potentially be eligible for E-Rate. So they'll go out, see our bid, and then the bids will come through to me. After that, we close that window, and then whatever I put in the 471 for what we have for services, I then would get reimbursed up to whatever my poverty rate level is the year following, for those services that I've incurred.
So this money, we're getting back from the eleventh and twelfth?
Two previous years, yep, correct.
And at that point in time, we said we were going to spend money on-
Whatever-
Network infrastructure and devices.
And stuff that we did.
So this, oh, go ahead.
Right, I mean, because we've been doing this for years.
Right, like, what we're doing right now, I didn't have to tell them two years ago what we're doing, it's what I'm spending. So I have, I have EarthLink for internet, okay, and for phones. So I'm putting in my 471 that that's what I am, that's what I have for services. I'm putting in that I have Comcast, I'm putting in the services that are provided to the district. Not what I plan to do with the money, but those are the services I get reimbursed for.
Currently incurring.
Correct, for expenses.
Or in this case, what we already, you put it in for what we already did in eleven and twelve.
Correct, yes.
Alright, does that make sense?
Yeah.
I think I'm better with it now.
So with the, the revenue, that, that's coming back to us, and we have the forty-seven, four-twenty in the technology, technology trust fund?
Yep, and I also provide a E-Rate fund.
We have.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Yeah, it's in your package.
The trust fund summary?
Oh, oh.
That's how much is in there.
Oh.
They don't want to use the whole thing.
The fifty thousand that's- Fifty that's anticipated?
Yep.
Is that coming from the, the fund balance we already saw, but we're waiting for it to be audited to say that we can have fifty?
Yes.
So it's not coming out of what we think thirteen, fourteen will give, it's out of twelve, thirteen?
No, it's out of twelve, thirteen, and I'm just waiting, once the tax rate is pretty much set and the, and then, then that would be no longer unanticipated, but it will be-
And what we've already declared for thirteen and fourteen is just interest earnings?
Correct.
Okay. Can I take a spin back, real quick? Tell me about industrial arts and desktops that are now nine to ten years old, and what it is that ten-year-old desktops in that environment are actually providing for right now, such that we want to replace them? Because it can't be serving up a heck of a lot to our kids, do you know?
How many are left in that room?
Um, I pulled out probably five since the beginning of the year, that are just defective and broken.
Yep.
But if you're asking what the teacher's using them for, she uses design software. She's apparently using them to's for kids to design projects, to, to, you know, electronically plan out what they want to eventually then go and make. Because she's been asking me to help her installing some of the software, so.
Is that like Adobe and-
CAD?
I think it's CAD.
Vector graphs.
CAD Junior or something, but it's CAD.
I don't remember the exact name of the software, but it was, it was a software that was formerly owned by Google and now is owned by an independent company, but what it does is it allows kids to plan out complex engineering or craft work projects.
This is our tech ed teacher of the year, this is Kat Namy?
Yes.
Yes. So the software that's on these existing computers, how will we then get that software onto new computers?
It's all web-based, it comes off of the web.
Yeah.
I think they're using, is it Sketchup?
Yeah, that's it, that's one of them anyway. There, there's also software that she's not using, because the machines can't handle it.
But if she had new desktops, then she would be able to.
I would say so.
That's the concept.
I chased that, I want to chase on your backup, I want to ask the question again about, the cloud storage is unlimited, that's great, thirteen hundred bucks, does thirteen hundred bucks really buy us three years?
We're, we're back to data backup.
Now I'm off to have a data backup, we skipped that, so I just wanted to touch it.
Alright, well, yeah, that's important. So this estimated cost here for a data backup solution, what we have right now are Western Digital external hard drives, sitting on top of the servers they're backing up, which are sitting on the floor where, I've, I've got one in the rack, I just ordered server rails for another one, so we can get them up off the floor where they belong, you know, a five thousand dollar piece of equipment. Now, usually you don't want your data backup target on top of the device you're backing up.
What's the sense?
Just in case. So what we'd have here is an actual backup server that would sit in the rack at the high school. The server here at the SAU would back up to that device, the server at the NHS would back up to that device, and the NES would back up to the device. That would then send all that data offsite to a cloud storage. So the cost there is twenty-seven hundred dollars for that backup server, and again, that's going to last us at least five years. I don't see, unless we started storing large amounts of data, but we're, we're in the process of moving to Google Drive accounts for all of our students. So we'll, we'll maybe see local data go down.
With a name like Barracuda, it better-
It's good, it's good stuff.
Barracuda's good, yeah.
Barracuda's good stuff. Can you, can you enhance this, like, if you needed to add another, you know, another five hundred gig, or? Would you have to roll, roll it out and replace it?
I don't think you can add on to this device, but technically you can put a terabyte on there.
Okay.
They recommend.
A what?
A terabyte.
Double the, double the storage of what-
Thousand gigabytes, yeah.
I thought you said termite, I'm like, whoa. That's cool.
You don't want terabytes on your-
Terabytes.
Like, wow, is that what they're calling it now?
So the twenty-seven hundred gets us the hardware, and that thirteen hundred dollars is three-year support and access unlimited storage to the cloud. And then three years later, we'd be looking at another thirteen hundred. But, I mean, they've had a disaster in the past here that, that was quite expensive, so.
Thirteen hundred, I was asking the question, because thirteen hundred dollars is short money to know that the entire, the entire district essentially is backed up to the cloud. As long as it doesn't rain on the cloud, we're all set, so.
Exactly. So another thing to point out, a lot of staff members are using their Google Drive accounts, we're starting to roll those out to students, and we just set up a backup for those Google drives, because accidental deletion, if, if a kid wipes out their folders portfolio. So now we offer backups for their drive. And we'll see that grow, right now we have two hundred gigs. And once we, I know we're going to add a thousand students, start using their drives, we're going to see that number increase. But that's in next year's budget, I was able to get that going now. Off topic, but important to mention. Move on to the switching.
Sure.
Alright, or any other questions on the Barracuda?
No, I have questions about other things, but-
Alright.
You can just keep, keep going.
So here you see eighteen thousand dollars for network switching. All the computers are old, all of our switching is old. And we're talking, also in this plan's, a request to increase our bandwidth here. If we increased our bandwidth right now, would see little performance increase on the network. All of our switching, again, is old, it's using an old ten-one-hundred protocol.
So when you say increase the bandwidth, you mean the internet connection to the outside world?
Exactly. And here's a request to add a, a second line from Comcast, so we have two one-hundred meg pipes in and out. But that's, in this proposal here, you see it behind the switching, because if the switching does not get upgraded, it's not worth increasing our bandwidth. And this estimated cost here would replace every switch in the district, which I believe is probably close to fifteen, I don't know if I have the number in here, or maybe more, but if we do replace this, it would give us a great opportunity to go through, if you see the pictures here, rewire all those racks, neaten everything up, because those things are a mess.
Marge.
That's Marge Simpson's way?
As far as troubleshooting goes, to, to get in there and try to find, nothing's labeled.
Oh my god.
It's rough.
Oh my god.
So this is just, it's just going to be, and see what happens?
Kind of, unplug stuff, see what happens.
It's almost a reason to get up in the morning, isn't it? Make you happy to be Jason.
So this, this money here would allow us to increase performance on our network. Switching's one of those things, you can, I mean, you, we could let this run eight years before we replace it again, and it's something we could, again, move across the street if we were to go to a new building. So this is not something you'll see pop up in three years that we need to replace again.
Right, there, in this proposal, there is a, an engineer scheduled to come and visit?
Correct.
Is there a cost for that?
I don't know if that cost is in here, but there is a cost associated with that, and that will come out of this- And that will come out of this year's budget. I could go in and, and tell you what we need to replace, but I'd feel a lot more comfortable spending eighteen thousand dollars after having a, a actual network engineer in here to tell us exactly, um, maybe rework the, the current, um, setup that we have.
So Christine's comfortable with that cost being absorbed in the budget that we have, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, I submitted, I already have a PO approved for that, and we talked him down quite a bit. But it's, I mean, ha, to have a pro in here and actually might be able to save some costs and, and eliminate some hardware that we don't need to replace. There's a few Cisco routers in there that are to replace and might be ten thousand dollars apiece, um, which our firewall can do the work. So we're looking to delete that router and, um, let the firewall take, pick up the slack there and, and put it to use, so.
Oh.
That's the plan, trim, trim out the fat basically, and, um.
So have you done a network analysis to determine where the breakpoint is as to how many of those, or? That you need to upgrade those ten-one-hundred switches to take advantage of more bandwidth, or you're just kind of operating off of rules of thumb or?
I mean, right now we can do a speed test there and, uh, we have a hundred meg pipe coming in from Comcast and we get about ten megs a second download. If you plug straight into the modem, you'll get a hundred, so it's, it's our switching that, you know, it's just, it's not built for, um, gigabits. B plus all the new equipment we're buying, all the, uh, network cards on those devices. A gig, gigabits, so. For the most part, these switches are unmanaged except for, um, anything we'd use for PoE wireless. So.
I have another question.
Sure.
It's not about that, it's about the increased bandwidth, kind of. And here it says that there's an annual cost of twenty-seven twenty, and then over in the data backup solution, every three years it would be thirteen hundred dollars. So there are some annual costs that would be incurred from these, and have we considered that impact on, I mean, are they minimal? Is it nothing that?
On the scale of things, I think so, right?
Very much so, absolutely.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. You also said, back when we were talking about the Arrow Hive, I think, the wireless network?
Yep.
The three-year support, how much would we have to pay for ev- every three years for the support?
I can give you that number.
You can, okay.
I, I have it in here, but it's attached to, um, each access point.
All right, that's fine.
I think it's about sixty, seventy dollars per access point, it'll be about thirty, uh, so call it. Do the math.
Do the math, Nathan, you're a mystery.
I'm sorry, I was reading, what's that?
Yeah, my, it may be.
It's all right.
It's like eighteen on rocks.
All right, all right.
I'm just.
Yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be, uh, you know, ten thousand dollars. And again, that's, that service and support, something goes down, instant replacement or, um, make a phone call and get support.
Okay.
Can we talk about room one-ten?
Room one-ten, this is a, uh, math lab that, I don't even, those are old Cabletron switches with decorative, um, shelving brackets holding them up. Which, I mean, they still work, um, but, but the room's a mess, I know when they go to wax the floor in there, um, some of the maintenance staff had asked, can you get the wires off the floor? Estimated cost for this is eight hundred dollars, Chris and I would do the work ourselves, I have some, uh, quite a bit of experience doing network cabling, so. We could do this over break or do it piece by piece after hours. Proper ports in the wall, no wires hanging from the ceiling, going across the floors. And also in this cost is, um, for a replacement switch in there too. Throw a patch panel on the wall, switch and get rid of those Cabletrons there.
Just from a safety standpoint, I mean, that list looks so dangerous.
Yeah.
All over the floor like that.
There's actually a solo cup hanging in there too. The switch.
That's what that is?
Yeah, I think it's a, uh.
No.
Pen holder, or markers in there.
Oh, great.
So anyways, there's just, um, when Chris started, I said, let's, our goal's here to, um, introduce a business class IT department to the district and, um, as he has mentioned before, you know, provide customer service and cleaning up all the messes, cleaning up the wiring, making things look professional. It reflects us, so.
How much easier would your life be?
With this? I mean, it would create a lot of work for us.
It's not about making your life easy, but I'm just saying, efficient.
Of the district, if we're running a, a district, a business, you want, you, I mean, we need.
It's the right way to do it. As far as management goes, it, it consolidates a lot of things and, um, would allow us to start doing some more, um, professional development and move to start doing some integration too, 'cause right now we're straight tech support.
Yeah.
And just for our teachers and our students too, to make life easier.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, well.
And Jason, I believe the SAU is gonna be split off, correct? We'll have our own dedicated line now?
We can, well, we'll sell two lines, but we can, all the traffics dedicated anyways, but, um, we could share some of that bandwidth with the SAU.
Is there connectivity right now in the community? Is there anything that connects? Is there anything, is there anything that connects the SAU office with the elementary school and the junior, senior high school?
There are two fiber runs, so everything, we have our two, or our Comcast line coming into the, uh, high school.
Yep.
EarthLink line for our phones, um, from that building, there's two runs to the SAU office, two runs of fiber to the elementary school.
Help me, fiber or copper?
Fiber.
Okay, cool.
I used to have, I used to manage two separate networks a mile apart and it was almost more difficult, um, not having that.
Yeah.
You know, one network, so, um, yeah, I was actually excited, that was one of the few things I was excited about.
One of the few things.
Let me ask, so, yeah.
The opportunity.
Uh, the opportunity was.
Just from the high school to the SAU, is it one to the elementary as well?
Correct.
Wow.
Actually two runs, yeah, so, um.
It's killing me.
So, so is this, is the six-megabit, um, ether, uh, EarthLink, is that redundant? If you, if you, if you double up on, on Comcast lines, that was a, you were asking about bandwidth. I can't imagine how much we're paying for that, but that feels like you could isolate, you could isolate voice channels on Comcast, I don't know if Comcast will let you do that, but across the fiber, you ought to be able to move voice traffic and regulate it ourselves, and we could get rid of the cost of that six-bit line.
So, I don't know, we, well, I mean, we're looking to shop on our, our whole VoIP system.
Everything, anyway?
It's ending in March, expires in March, so we were locked into it, so I couldn't get out.
Goodness, it goes.
Right, okay.
I tried.
But it's done in March, which is a good thing.
It's done in March.
We had a conversation today with the, the tech consultant about a possible phone systems and some ideas that, uh, could then, again, be carried across the street if we build a new school.
I think if we, uh, hosted in-house, 'cause right now we're on a hosted solution through EarthLink, um, if we were to stay with the hosted solution, we're gonna pay that, that high monthly cost. Leasing hardware, um, plus the services, so, um, I'm gonna shop both, um, hosting in-house and then, and offsite too, so.
So the first, the first three items on this list is for next year.
No, they're purchased now, they'd be pulled out of the budget proposal for next.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it was originally in FY fifteen proposal.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Do we need to?
So, I'll tell you.
Motion, or, I don't, oh, sorry.
This is when true colors show, because here's, here's, I would, here's what I would motion, here, and this is the BA in me. So you've already been through one, now you go through another one, this is what I would say, I like, I understand and appreciate the desktops. I hope that, given the dollars and the approval, that you would contemplate the best solution, and if it meant laptops versus desktops or vice versa. You know, we spend the money as wisely as we can, but assuming that you've already been through all that due diligence and this is where we're at, I don't have any problem with the first three lines and appreciate that that reduces the budget request for next year, which we have to work on anyway. The staff laptops are twenty-five thousand dollars, I can see, the data backup for four grand, sounds like very short money to do something that's very important to the district. In another, you know, as, as we contemplate this today, tomorrow and into the future. Wow, if you've got fiber, one of the things you could do that's also short money, if you can put the software solution in place is just do offsite spinning. So back up the junior, senior high to the elementary, the elementary, the SAU, and the SAU to the junior, senior high, and you don't really need the cloud, although for thirteen hundred bucks over three years, don't worry about it, let the cloud have it.
That's nice, you never know hurricane, I mean.
Right.
Have some other buildings, so.
So I would, I'm supportive of that.
Can I, can I remind you that we had our elementary, um, what was that, in July, was struck by lightning?
Yeah.
And then a week later, the junior, senior high school. Or vice versa, so.
It's crazy, so. I, I, I support the, I support the eighteen thousand dollars for network switching, I can't argue because I, you know, you, you're not gonna know the full cost until you really chase it down in the engineers' end and you can feel confident in that. I, I would, uh, I would, I would reduce the wireless network plan, the twenty-seven-six, because I would drop the outdoor classroom. It's a great idea, but I think what little savings we can anticipate, you know, till such time as we can make full benefit out of everything else that we're doing, I wouldn't worry about grabbing our devices and taking them outside. So I would drop that ten thou, that one thousand fifty dollars, and I'd also drop the contingency of thirteen fifty and sell you to find it somewhere else in the operating budget now. And then I would drop the last two lines and tell you, you won't increase the bandwidth, that's a twelve-month number that you don't really need because it's already November. And by the time you actually can secure everything else and make the additional bandwidth really truly valuable, you'll be somewhere into the winter. And at that point, increase it whenever you want, take it out of the operating somewhere. Still from, I know that special ed has already stolen all the money, we're gonna be in the trust fund, but still, we, we can make priorities, you know, we can make choices. And, and, and I'll buy the coffee, because I think that cleaning up room one-ten is great, but again, I'd say, can't we find that out of the operating? And if I made those reductions, we'd be at a request of ninety-one-five. And I would suggest if you're confident in fifty, that we make a motion to accept this and pull forty-one-five out of the trust and, and do the best we can otherwise, because by the time we actually get to doing some of this, there will be savings in some of that hopefully, and there will be efficiencies that can help us fill in the gaps.
Definitely.
So moved. You can discuss it, I, you know.
I'm not sure what to discuss.
Did I hear a second?
Did he breathe?
For the, for the sake of progress.
I didn't hear a second, thank you.
All I did was cut five, six grand.
All right, so let's have a discussion.
Which is maybe. Some would say it was petty of me, but, you know.
No, I, and I agree with the outside, the outside class.
In the interest of trying to do that, so.
I do like the idea of eventually.
Oh, yeah.
The beauty with the Arrow Hive product, um, so right now we, it's basically set up, configured, um, if we were to go with this, it's a matter of getting the wiring in place, the PoE switching, and plugging in the access points. If we wanted to expand and, and go with the outside classroom, plug it in, so.
So you, um, in one breath?
Yeah, I'm, I'm amazed, truly.
I'm still processing.
Want me to go back? I can do that again.
Well, I just have a specific question regarding the network, uh, sorry, the wireless network, thirty thousand line, you, you took something from that?
I, I just on the, that's on the back page, and I, I reduced the one thousand fifty option for the outdoor classroom, and I reduced the contingency of thirteen fifty.
So that number now becomes from thirty?
Twenty-seven-six.
Okay.
And then I just lined out the last two.
Okay.
The bandwidth and the network infrastructure?
Yeah, and said, I mean, I think it's, it's part, it's kinda like coming with a capital, a capital plan and saying we should, you know, and we should paint this room. And the thought, you know, the, the response would be, yeah, you should paint the room, but painting the room is an operational expense and you should be doing that every year in some rooms. And it shouldn't be part of the capital plan, the capital plan is building something that lasts twenty or thirty years, not painting. So put painting in the operating, and so I, I look at room one-ten, I think, oh my god, that absolutely needs to be dealt with, but it could have and should have been dealt with any time in the last decade probably, and it should be dealt with, but it doesn't feel like it, to me, it doesn't feel like it fits in this infrastructure conversation, it's just something that we ought to clean up and deal with.
What's your revised total?
Ninety-one thousand five hundred.
Yes.
Curse all night long.
And so your technology?
Well, I'm just, what's rolling in my head is some special ed news we have for you later.
Oh, really?
See, see.
That's why I ask, can we absorb that, that's, you know.
I, I think that the, I think this needs to be a priority.
At room one-ten or the whole thing?
Out of all, out of all the other things coming down the pike, I really think technology in this district should be a priority.
The, the demand's there for it.
We should be able to find the money to do it, regardless of what we have coming.
What's your, what's your revised technology withdrawal?
Forty-one-five, assuming that the fifty is a pretty confident number.
It's a confident number, that's what I was waiting for.
Out of E-rate, I mean, if we can get fifty thousand, then we could authorize forty-one thousand five hundred. And it looks like we're sitting on, once the audit is complete and the fifty is transferred, we've got just shy of a hundred thousand in the account, which will still leave us in excess of fifty thousand, there won't be anything to put in there at the end of this year because of special ed expenses that we're encompassing, you know, that we're dealing with. So it's unreasonable to assume that we'll have much in the way of a fund balance at all, so we're not gonna add to that again, so we don't wanna drain it and leave it zero. So if we can only take forty-one-five, we'll probably leave fifty-five.
I thought we built this as a really, I, I felt like, at the end of this, I wanna have, have fifty thousand dollars in it for emergency.
So Jason, with this, with what we're suggesting is that.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I know you, you guys have gone above and beyond and then some, and, you know, especially for room one-ten, you've offered to do it, you know, after hours, et cetera, so.
I bought, I, I buy coffee, I said, I mean, I'm like, I'll sit there, I'll even play the jukebox for you.
Here's a drink of coffee.
I'll spend CDs.
You'll spend CDs.
Well, I had been kind of hoping though, that there are other proposals in our budget for technology that we'd be able to maybe tap the technology for. So if you're already taking forty-seven from there.
We can, yeah.
Yeah, so that's.
When we met, you know, Jason and I and, and Chris Sandrisky met today and we went through and said, okay, what are our priorities? And what, what comes out of the budget and what doesn't? And yet then leaving fifty thousand dollars in the technology fund, that's where we are. Later, on this budget, it's, on this agenda, it says FY fifteen budget proposal adjustments, we don't have that for you tonight, we're still not ready for that. But if you wanted to talk using more technology funds, if that's what you're asking, we could do that at our next meeting. I, I don't know, that's just a suggestion. My question is kind of a different topic.
Yeah, I mean, 'cause like I said last week when we talked about the budget, I had wanted to know what was in the trust funds, 'cause I was kind of hoping that we could take that number where we are and still provide the district with the technology that it needs, but not on the backs of the taxpayers. So now that I know you're taking forty-seven from that and you wanna leave fifty, that kind of changes some of my thinking, I guess is all that I'm saying. So.
So can you remind me of what's, I guess, in the budget for technology? It's, what's there, I'm, I'm thinking is not network infrastructure, it's, or servers, it's endpoint devices.
Right.
Yes.
And, um. You would have that in that, uh, adjustments. When I look at, you know, this list here, you know, it, it doesn't matter, if, if we do it, any of it, we're gonna do all of it, I think, so. How I prioritize things different from where Nate does, really doesn't matter a whole lot, except that I, I really wanna get the network infrastructure up and running before we start throwing more or even replacement hardware that's gonna
Tax it even more, yeah.
So I guess I just wanted to make that statement that the highest priority for me is to, to make the, um.
The infrastructure change.
Put the, put the foundation in before we pile on.
So you mean, what, what was given, just so I, 'cause I'm. You mean, when we were looking at what was proposed for technology the last time, which was five-sixty-six? And then seeing how this, is that what you mean? So readjust that five-sixty-six number based on what this proposal is?
When we dig into the budget more, we can, we can have further discussions about how many other.
How many spark boards, how many, you know, the.
Oh, yes, okay.
To me, this, if we're gonna talk about in the, in the broad subject of technology, this is highest priority for me.
Right.
So this is, I think, is wise to get at now. And if it's helpful, even though, you know, we've been talking about the FY fifteen budget for a while and you're just seeing this tonight, this has been in the development stage even before the, the budget was done. And, and the only thing that delays it tonight was waiting for E-rate. And so when, when, when Jason.
And so when Jason and the principal looked at it, they said, infrastructure first. And Chris said, first priority for my school is 25 laptops or thereabouts for his teaching staff. And then the rest, then, beyond that, then went into the FY '15 budget. Okay? And so then today, when we knew, when I knew what the E-rate was and we met, I said, okay, now what can we pull out of the budget that takes us up to this cap? And that's where it came to be this proposal.
So we have a motion on the table. We have a second. Are there any further discussions? All right. Shall we, do we have the motion? Like, I don't even remember what it was at this point. 91.
91.5, correct?
91.5.
Yes.
All right.
You tell me, are we fiscal agents to expend the technology trust fund?
Yes.
Yes, you are.
Maybe it ought to be two motions. Because if you're looking for the authority or the approval of the board to move ahead with this technology project, that's great.
And then directly authorized.
Yes, yes.
Sure.
And I'm not really, you can spend the 91.5 anyway alike. And if anybody really wants to complain, you can make it 93.5 or 97.4 or 20.1. I just felt like, you know, show some good faith and attempt to, and if this were my proposal, I probably would have hoped for 90 and asked for 97.420. So I'm kind of guessing that's where we're at, so make the motion.
We already have a motion.
No, he's.
I will withdraw my second.
Yes, you do withdraw.
I state that motion because I tried to do both at the same time and just encourage and move that we approve of the technology proposal at a total dollar value of 91,500.
I'll second that.
Okay. I think we have the discussion, so I'm going to move on to, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unopposed. Okay, so you got that?
Yes.
Okay, good.
And if you like, the second, the second motion then would be to authorize the superintendent and the business administrator to secure from the technology trust fund reimbursement of 41,500 to fund this technology project approved tonight by the board.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Very well put. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unopposed.
Nicely done.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
This is really good stuff.
Thank you for all your help.
Make it happen.
And good luck. And hold Nathan accountable about coffee.
Let me know when I need to come in with Mountain Dew instead if we don't like coffee. I'll hold the other end of the conduit. Water guy?
Thank you. And Nathan will spin the CDs.
I'll hold the other end of the conduit.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job.
I look forward to hearing how wonderfully fast our bandwidth is and, you know, all sorts of wonderful things. All right.